Okay, today will be the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee Meeting on July 20th at 2:00 P.M. I would like to call to order, if you hear your name, please let me know you are in attendance. Daniel Harrison. Karen Sanders. Here.
Here.
Linda Martin.
I'm here.
I'm here.
It's echoing.
Andrea Medina. Gary Ananian. David Caddell. Steve Kinsey. Christopher McGeehee.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, it does look like we have a committee member from District 2, District 4, and District 5. So a quorum has been met to move forward with today's meeting. Okay, my name is Alicia Vitiadis, and I am the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee Coordinator, and I'd like to welcome the Kern County Public Works staff we have on the call, county council, and guests. Now I'd like to move on to item number three on the agenda. The approval of the resolution for Keep Kern Beautiful Committee to hold remote meetings. Along with the agenda that was sent was a copy of the resolution number 2022-007, allowing the resolution for the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the Keep Kern Beautiful Committee for the period of July 7th, 2022, through August 5th, 2022 pursuant to the Roth and Brown Act. And a copy has been included for your review. Do we have any questions on that from the committee? Or anyone on the call? Okay, may I get a motion to approve the resolution?
All motion.
All second.
I got a motion from Christopher McGeehee and a second from Karen Sanders, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number four on the agenda, the approval of the meeting minutes from June 15th, 2022. A copy of the meeting minutes were also provided to the committee and also the guests. If no one, if we have any comments or questions from the committee or anyone on the call? Okay, hearing none, may I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 15th?
Don't move, Sanders.
Thank you, may I get a second?
I wasn't present, so I can't make a motion for a second, so.
Okay.
I'll make a second.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, the motion carries, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number five on the agenda, new business. In last month's meeting, we had, went over several items, proposed items for discussion on items that can be purchased through the committee with our budget. A few other items were proposed, and so we decided to vote on moving this item to this month's meeting to consider more items. I just sent a copy of this to the committee, just to get a quick glimpse of it beforehand. But these, in addition to the items that were discussed on last meeting, I put down here at the bottom, just some additional items. For example, I know Andrea Medina mentioned gloves, the possibility of us purchasing gloves, as well as this type of the trash picker was also mentioned as a consideration. And then Gary Ananian actually recommended these Archme Orange U-Tongs. He said they've actually used them in the past for his cleanup, and that they're pretty sturdy and they've lasted so far for two years. He did mention that the pickers that I had initially suggested were, didn't seem like they would, you know, be durable and last, even though they, you know, they're significantly cheaper. But we definitely do want to invest in an item that's going to last for, all our committee members to use for at least, you know, a couple of years. So we can consider that. Hey, Gary.
How's it going?
Good, good, thank you for joining us.
I was only, I'm in Mount Whitney. I'm up in Mount Whitney, I got lost track of time, and I saw my watch and I raced down the hill to get to Lone Point to get service.
Oh, well, thank you for joining us. We're actually on item number five of the agenda, discussing some proposed items.
Okay.
To purchase. So Gary, I just finished telling the committee about this product that you had recommended, the Archme Orange U-Tongs. You said that you've had used them in the past and that they're pretty durable.
Yeah, they're the best ones that we've had so far. I've used every trash picker that's out there, and this has been the one that's lasted the longest. I think we're going on three years right now with the first batch that we bought several years ago, and we still have them, and they're, they're pretty heavy metal, they're really solid, and the best part is the suction cups on the bottom are replaceable. So they sell like, on Amazon, they sell like accessory packs with the suction cups. So if the suction were to break, you can put a new suction in versus like the other trash pickers. If something broke, the whole thing is useless and you have to throw it away, where these are not, you can just replace the suction cups.
Oh, that's great to know. Yeah, thanks, thanks for that feedback, Gary, so that's, that's good. I had initially put, so they come six in a pack, and the proposed quantity for ordering would be at least 100, so that we have enough if multiple people are hosting community cleanups on the same day, for example, we can distribute them equally as possible. So they are a little on the pricier side, but that makes sense, being that, you know, they seem more heavy-duty and durable. So say we were to order 100, around 102 of them, it would come out to being almost close to 2,000. So that kind of would be like, that would be all of our funds gone, going to these pickers. But we can always order, like start out with like maybe 50, and then go from there. You know, we can take this time to discuss that as a committee on how much quantity you guys think would be best, or how our funds should be used. So we can definitely come back if you guys have any suggestions on the amount we want to order, if we want to move forward with purchasing this product. And just another item that was suggested at last month's meeting was this OA picker. I think Gary had mentioned that Linda had mentioned it. So I found it on Amazon, now I've found it on Home Depot, and surprisingly, it seemed, it was like $10 cheaper on Home Depot. Maybe I'm not, I didn't see it as a bulk order, so this would be $70 for one picker. And so that is pretty pricey, but I mean, if you guys feel like maybe we want to order like maybe five of these or 10 of these specifically for, just to have on hand, if you guys feel that's necessary, we can consider that. But I just wanted to show that, you know, the price differences and making sure we get the most out of our budget. But I don't know, Linda, did, did you see these anywhere, or Gary, that they sell them in bulk, or is this pretty common to see this picker at that price?
I've, I've never seen them anywhere in person, and we got these donated to us a while back, and we had five of them delivered to us from this company. And we only use these when we do our whitewater rafting cleanups, because these things will extend out to like 10 feet, 12 feet long. And sometimes when there's just one piece of trash, it's just easier for us to use this tool than to have the raft pull over and have everybody get out. When it comes to land-based cleanups, I've only used this thing once, enough to pick up a Mylar balloon out of a tree. I don't think we need 20, I would say maybe one, I mean, not one, maybe five at the most. That's just my recommendation, because I've really, like, like I said, I've only used it once in a land-based cleanup in the past year, but we use this more on the river for the whitewater rafting cleanups.
That's great, that's a good point. And yeah, I do see that in the description, that it does extend, so that's a good point, thanks, Gary. And Linda, I have your hand up?
Oh, I was just agreeing with Gary that, I didn't realize those were so much, we didn't use them on the whitewater one, and they were very handy. But yes, as far as land cleanup, I don't know if we would use them as much unless we're walking down a riverbank, and you know, you don't want to step into the mud, things like that, so I would go with a lower quantity as well, just because they're so expensive. Gary, do those look like yours?
Yeah, they, just in one, I think there's only one company that makes these, because I've only seen them at like two places online, and that's about it. I've never seen these anywhere else, so I don't think there's other companies that are making this specific one. But then I really didn't put a lot of energy into shopping for them anyway, because we just had five that was given to us, and we've been only using that. I've never needed any more. But yeah, I don't know, if this is at Home Depot, 70, this is way cheaper than what I found, the one website I found was like 120 is what they were selling it for. So 70 is a great price. I mean, like I said, I would probably buy one or two per district just to have, I don't think we would need like 20 of them. So yeah, I mean, that's a, I mean, even we probably could get away with one per district. Like, for an urban cleanup, this would be great for like picking balloons out of the trees, or you know, something like, you were saying, walking on the riverbank in Bakersfield, you know, in those kind of areas where you don't want getting muddy or wet. So, but yeah, maybe one or two per district would be great.
No, that's a great point. I like that. You know, hard-to-reach places, at least one per district can be considered, so that's, that's good to know, thank you, Gary and Linda. So those are the items, so. So I mean, I think what we'll do for this meeting is just, you know, discuss quantities, hone down on an item, or, or maybe two or three items in particular, and then focus on quantities, and then in our next meeting, I'll take what we all decided on today, and I'll put like a proposal together that will come out with the exact pricing, so that we can vote on the cost, the quantity, and then move forward with actually purchasing it for our committee to use, if that sounds okay with everyone. So just really quickly touching back on some of the items that we went over on our last meeting, so I think it's safe to say, and please let me know if you have an opinion on that, to not, we won't, we won't be considering these six-pack trash pickup tools. Do we still want to be, we still want to consider the roller frames and the painting materials, if that sounds good? We can go back and talk about the quantity. I know we had talked about these also extendable painting rollers. And then also, of course, if we're going to go with, moving forward with the painting material, we will need some roller covers as well as the roller trays. And so we had talked about gloves, the purchasing of gloves, and so we can also consider that, ordering it like in different sizes, of course, since we know we have, you know, children at times that come out to our cleanup, so we definitely want to accommodate with some smaller-sized gloves as well as extra-large. And then as far as this trash picker, this is also recommended, to do more research on at our last meeting. I couldn't find this particular style of picker in a bulk purchase, so this one specifically was the cheapest one I could find for like $9, but that was per trash picker. So say we wanted to order 100 of them, or even 50 would be close to 500, just for, you know, this, this style. I do like, I do like that we have a committee member who has used these pickers in the past, and that, you know, he's already going on three, three years with them, and that the suction cups are replaceable, so we don't have to completely get rid of them, if they break, we can easily repurchase those to replace that. So I think, you know, this would be the best option for the committee as a whole. They are on the pricier side, so I had initially suggested ordering 17 orders, which would come out to a little over 100 trash pickers, but it would also cost close to $2,000, which is our total bud, amount we have budgeted within our committee and the available funds we have. And so does anyone, does any one of the committee members have a suggested quantity you guys want to go with, so that we don't max out our funds? 25 trash pickers, 50? Any suggestions?
Well, you don't have to spend money for me, we have a ton of these. And then every, every year for our cleanups, we get sponsorship money to buy more, and we just received another $10,000 grant from the Forest Service to go towards river cleanups in the forest, so we're going to use more, some of that money to buy more pickers, but you don't, you can like count me out and take that money to another district if you want, or somebody else's area.
Okay, so my next question, so, oh, go ahead, Linda.
How many do we have available right now?
Well, I know Kim's on the line, but I think we have like 25, is that right, Kim?
It should be 26.
I don't know about everyone else's district, but probably the most volunteers I've had is close to 100. I feel like the only way we would get into some trouble if we had multiple cleanups on the same day, but from listening to the group for the last year, I feel like we're all pretty staggered out pretty well, so we can all share, but that's the most I ever have. I was looking through the list, and the only thing that I think might be missing is some safety vests, and I was just wondering how many we had. I have some at our company that I loaned out, but I didn't know how many we had to, you know, do that, because I've got some people that keep wanting to do roadside cleanups, which scares me. It's great, but, sorry. So that would be my only other recommendation. And as far as the gloves, I don't know what the group thinks. How do your participants feel about reusing gloves? Should, I mean, I know a lot of, if we're having the pickers, do they need gloves? I mean, sometimes, yes, we do have to reach out, but is it better? I mean, it's better to, of course, have reusable items, but with everyone's panic with COVID and everything else, is it better to save some money right now and, and use the disposable one-time glove? I, I don't know, I'm just trying, so we don't deplete our entire.
I have a suggestion.
Oh, go ahead, Karen.
Okay, my suggestion is, is, okay, so if we purchase gloves for people to use, advise them to put vinyl gloves on before they put the work gloves on, that way they can be reused. Some of the groups that I've worked with in the past who do pick up, they want the gloves, and I can't say that I blame them, but if they put on disposable gloves first and then put the work gloves on, it works pretty good.
Okay, I like your suggestion, Karen, so you're saying if you were to go with that option, then you guys would be collecting the gloves back after each cleanup, is that what you're saying? To distribute at the next one?
I mean, we could, that way, you know, that way there wouldn't be a waste of resources.
Yeah, I like that suggestion, and also the suggestion that Linda made about like maybe some people using gloves and actually picking up the trash, and some people not using gloves but using the grabbers, there could be that option as well. So it's like, say, we ran out of grabbers for that event, then people would use the gloves instead. We definitely, you know, we can always, you know, start out with like a small quantity for like each of these items and see like how well they do. I mean, we do have some gloves and safety vests in stock that we use for, or cleanups that are sponsored, you know, by Public Works, but we would also like to have our own in stock for the committee's use, available use. So. So based on, you know, Linda's comment about, you know, she hasn't had more than like, say, 100 people at her cleanup, so on average, you know, maybe like 30 to 70 people, we already have 29, 26 grabbers. How would an additional, maybe 40 to 50 trash picker sound? Would that be, would that sound reasonable to the committee for that quantity?
I think that sounds reasonable, this is Karen Sanders.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I'm good with that number, too.
Okay. And so I said 40, right? Is that what I said? I can't, I don't know if I gave a range. Okay, so yeah, so let's go with between 40 and 50 quantity, and do, does the Archme Orange U-Tong sound good for that purchase? Would that be?
I'll go with Gary's recommendation for those.
Okay. Okay, so I will put a proposal together that includes the Archme Orange, and then based on some, some quantity between 40 and 50. Okay, that said, and then for the O's, the OA's, Easy Pick Pond pliers, for now, because they are on the pricier side, and if, we know, going down the road, if we feel like we need more, or we have more funds to purchase these, but for now, we'll see if we can order just one per district. How does that sound? Does that work for the committee? So five in total?
It works good for me, Sanders.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too, Gary.
Thank you.
And Alicia, I mean, if, if it's getting really tight on the budget, I mean, even three, if we just shared them, since Gary was saying, you know, he's only ever used one, I don't have a lot of waterways by me, unless it's canal, so, I mean, I feel like we could always buy more, I hate depleting your whole fund.
Okay, okay, yeah, then I will kind of work in three, either three to five, you know, but I'll consider the three, so that we can make our budget stretch and have some additional funding left over. Okay, so we're not going to go with the trash picker. As far as the gloves, we'll come back to the gloves, but I want to touch on the painting material, because I know that that's been something that's been brought up from several committee members as far as doing graffiti removal. So here we have a suggested order of 40, this is a pack of the nine-inch roller frames, which has, I believe, five, I think that's the total. So we would be ordering, I'm sorry, this is a pack of five, yeah, five wire frames. So we would be ordering 40 orders of the nine-inch roller frames at $2.94 each, which were total $117. How does that sound with the committee?
Alicia?
Uh-huh.
So I just wanted to throw it, when I, when we've done graffiti cleanups up here, I'm going to say they average between, I don't know, 20, no, probably no more than 30 people. I mean, I have some up in our area I can share as well, but I don't know how everyone else feels on how many we need, how many they have coming to a graffiti cleanup, I, sometimes it's only 10, so I just, sorry, again, I'm just trying to save you some money on how many people I usually get.
Got it, and so you're right, I mean, these can be definitely reused, I mean, we will have to most likely throw the roller covers away, I think that was suggested, but as far as these, yeah, we can definitely lower the quantity, because we can, you know, we use these and the committee members can schedule the time to use those. So how does maybe an order of 20 to start sound okay? 20?
Sounds good.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yeah, it sounds good, too.
Okay, perfect, okay. And let's go down to the, this is a nine-foot, I'm sorry, a nine-inch, four-foot paint roller. This is extendable, this would be great for use on like underpasses, or something, something where there's a lot of height to it. We can kind of use the same method as far as that extendable trash picker, maybe just order like two or three of these, and so if, you know, you can, each of the committee members can schedule the time to use this, so how does that sound? I think these would be useful to have at least one or two on hand for those events, for those type of cleanups.
I agree. I don't have a lot of bridges in my area, so I don't know how everyone else is for that.
Okay, so let's just, I'll just move between one and two. Okay, real quickly going down to, so here we have, this is the five-pack roller covers at $10 per pack, and so I think this is a pretty good quantity, but based on the fact that we'll most likely be discarding these when that, when they're disposed of, unless you, at your group, would like to, you know, take a little bit of additional time and clean them, but that's, you know, not going to be something we suggest. So we have here like an order of 30 by a pack, which were total about 150, but the qua, it would come out to a little under $300. We can even make it maybe like 20 orders, you know, and like reduce the cost, and kind of go from there, and if, you know, if we, we can always order more, if, you know, this becomes popular, or, you know, we get more participation in this event. So how does an order of 20 sound?
Sounds good to me, I've averaged maybe like two or three graffiti the last, in the last year, so I don't, I don't know however everyone else is doing with those, if we would need more.
Yeah, I think that number's fine.
Okay, so five pack of. Okay, thank you all. I feel like I ordered 20 orders. Okay, and one, two more items to discuss really quickly, so this is a 10-pack of the nine-inch paint roller trays at $11.95 per pack. So these, I mean, I'm hoping we'll be able to find a way to clean these out and reuse them, but I mean, Linda, how do you feel about that? Have you guys used, reused these paint trays before, are they like pretty messy to clean up afterwards?
So it's hard for me to tell what that is, they do make these plastic liners that go in, and I, I'm sorry, I just can't tell what it is.
I think these are.
These are paint trays, for the paint.
Oh, we're, we've just used the kind of throwaway liners that have, that have gone in. This, this looks like it might have a grid to it, is that right?
Yeah.
I don't know what everyone else thinks about it, but we've kind of gotten away with just using those little plastic liners and throwing them away. I know, with them, there's a metal that doesn't have the grid, I don't know how everyone else feels, it, they were pretty inexpensive.
Yeah, these plastic ones, there's no point in cleaning it, the amount of water you're going to waste trying to remove paint off that is just not worth it, it's just better off just tossing them.
Okay. Okay, so, you know, based on Gary and Linda's suggestions, maybe we can start by ordering maybe just like five orders of these and see how they work. If, you know, if you guys are doing graffiti removal and these are just not working for you, then, you know, we can look, consider another item in the future, or even try to, like as Linda mentioned, putting some type of a plastic cover over them so that it's an easy cleanup and that we can reuse these, but if you guys feel okay with just placing like an order of five, five orders of it, and then I'm kind of going from there.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Okay, so going down to the gloves. So we, if we place an order for gloves, we want to order various sizes, this is just a suggested quantity, if we were to order 10 orders of each of these three sizes. If we were to order ten orders of each of these three sizes, it would come out to, um, six, a little over six hundred and fifty dollars. So it is on the pricier side, and that would only give us two hundred and sixty gloves. Um, I think we can always, you know, utilize the grabbers with the gloves, I mean, not together, of course. Um, so maybe we can consider purchasing maybe like five orders of each of these and just to see, um. Maybe, maybe not five, maybe like, because we do have some gloves on hand that we have, but we definitely want to have like, um, some for our committee specifically to use. Does anyone have a suggestion on the quantity for these gloves, or if we don't want to move forward with glove purchases at the moment?
Um, so these gloves are like the.
Go ahead, Gary.
Uh, so I've bought these before and the volunteers have hated them. Uh, because of the material, it makes their hands sweat extremely profusely. Um, so we stopped using these gloves. Um, and what we do is on our setup table at the cleanups, we offer them the disposable latex gloves or those really cheap gardening gloves you buy for like a dollar at the Dollar Store. Um, and ninety-nine percent of the time, most of these volunteers won't take gloves because they're using the pickers. Um, and then when they do take gloves, they're usually taking just the latex disposable ones.
Okay. Now that, that's good, good to know. Thank you, Gary. So you mentioned the disposable latex gloves. That's something, you know, you can consider purchasing, and then you mentioned something about like a Dollar Store glove, too.
Yeah, they're like these, uh. Yeah, they sell for like a dollar. These Neoprene gloves, the problem with this, if we gave these to volunteers, even though they're real, we would have to come back and clean them all out because you sweat so bad in these gloves. And every glove that came back, we'd have to probably put through the washing cycle. And that's just gonna take more time and more resources to do, where latex glove, they can just, you know, throw it out when they're done, or those canvas gardening gloves are just, they're heavy duty, we can just, you know, we don't have to clean them or anything, we just throw them back in the box.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. Any other comments from the committee? Maybe this will be a product that we don't move forward with, um, today. Um, maybe we can, you know, consider it on our next purchase in the near future. Um, but we, we can definitely consider like providing disposable latex gloves in the meantime. Um, any comment from the committee or anybody on, uh, Kim, Kim, do you have a question?
I do. I, just a comment. I, if you guys do decide to order these, um, in all of the cleanup events that I've done, medium seems to be the size that a lot of people use. Uh, men, obviously, large, small, I rarely hand out. Um, it, because the small adult gloves are usually too small for kids, so it, it's kind of a waste to give those to them. But medium is the most, large is second, and small, I wouldn't order the same amount of all sizes. I would do more medium than small for sure. Just a suggestion.
I agree with her. Medium, large, and extra-large. Medium and large are your two main ones, and extra-large.
Yes.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Michelle? Michelle, do you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, hi, just adding that in my experience also with cleanup events, people prefer to just use those cheap disposable uh, gloves versus these, and I have had the exact same experience, is people just pour sweat into these things and they don't want to use them, and uh, and then you're just throwing them away at the end. Um, so that's just been my experience. My only other comment was, uh, the number of rollers that you're recommending, the wire rollers. Um, I think that you were recommending, um, I think, I can't remember if you said, an order of, let's see, an order of twenty? So an order of twenty, an order of twenty would be a hundred wire rollers, is that, am I doing the math right?
Oh, no, sorry, I think I might have stated that incorrectly. It's just, um, two dollars and ninety-four cents per roller. It's, it's just they're sold individually.
Oh, understood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, no, but that's great feedback. So I think for now, we can act the gloves. Until, you know, um, I can do a bit more research, but I mean, as far as, um, this purchase, um, we won't be including the gloves unless, um, another committee member has a comment on that. But, um, okay, so, um. I would like to, um, suggest that, um, we, I take the feedback and that we discussed today. I put a proposal together of the items and the quantity, and then, um, I present that number to the committee at our upcoming meeting on August, um, seventeenth. And then, then we can vote on approving that entire purchase at that time. So I would like to, I'm gonna do, are there any last-minute questions from the committee or anybody else on the call before we, um, um, approve this item to move on to our, um, our next month's agenda?
Yeah.
Um, Michelle, do you have a question?
Yes, Alicia, just one more question to the committee members, if any of them have worked towards garnering any additional donations, um, for the, the program.
Well, um, Michelle, I know, um, maybe a couple of committee meetings ago, we had discussed, um, the possibility of, of fundraising options and even, you know, working on fun, uh, working on some letter writing to like corporations and garnering some sponsorship. So that's something we can definitely touch up on at our next upcoming meeting, focusing more on that so that, um, we can be more proactive in gaining some funding for the committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, hearing no more, um, comments, I'd like to, um. May I get a motion to approve, um, item number five, um, as far as taking the items we discussed today and proposing at our upcoming meeting on August seventeenth?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Linda. May I get a second? Thank you, Gary. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, um, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, um, going back to our agenda, I would like to move on to item number six, presentation by Karina Mendez, um, our public works maintenance worker on recent and upcoming community cleanup efforts.
Hello?
Hi, Karina.
Hi, just had to make sure my mic was working. All right, so for this month, our rapid data that we have is two thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine countywide dump sites have been cleared. Seven hundred and nine tons collected. Um, four hundred and eighty-eight mattresses collected, and three hundred and forty-one of those have been recycled. Our encampments group have cleared two hundred and two encampments. And then for our hazardous waste events coming up. We have two on July second in Mojave and Tehachapi. Mojave is from nine AM to twelve PM. Tehachapi from nine AM to one. And on July ninth, um, we had one in Ridgecrest on ten AM to one PM. And then last Saturday, July sixteenth, we had one in Tehachapi from nine to one. And then today, we actually had one at the Glenville Transfer Station from nine AM to one PM. And then for this Saturday coming up, we have one in Lebec and Ridgecrest. The Lebec one is from nine AM to one, and the Ridgecrest one is from ten AM to one PM. And then for bulky waste events, uh, next month, we are planning one for the Wofford Heights area on August thirteenth from eight AM to twelve. It'll be at the Wofford Heights Park. That's, uh, three sixteen East Evans Road. And we will have the Cesar Chavez Environmental Corps and Thomas refuse out there helping us with that event. As for community cleanups, I'm not sure if Kim has anything scheduled for next month, but I know it's still pretty warm out there, so there might not be too many people who want to have events right now, but I do know, uh, for September at least, we'll have something out in Button Willow because they do have their, uh, Fall Farm Festival in October, and so usually we plan something a month in advance. Um, I want to say that one is scheduled for September third, I believe it is, but I'll update you guys on that one at the next meeting, too. And that's everything for me.
Great, thank you, Karina. Any questions from the committee or anybody on the call? Okay, um, hearing none. I would like to move on to item number seven. Any committee member announcements or reports? This will be the time. I do know, um, Karen Sanders is working on a cleanup in California City in September. Um, I don't know if she would like to, if you'd like to talk about that or end up, until the next meeting, Karen?
Yes, no, that's fine. I can, I can mention it now. Uh, September the seventeenth is National Cleanup Day. With the California City Chamber of Commerce. Uh, to, um. Hopefully tackle California City Boulevard. It's on the list of bad littering sites, and I think it would be beneficial for us to tackle that. They have another project that they would like to, uh, launch that day, uh, that would be to like, uh, have an adopt a street or adopt a neighborhood program, which they're working that out with the city officials. I don't have anything to do with that, but they just kind of want to pair the two events. And I have reached out to Alicia to, uh, talk about pickers and trash bags and that kind of thing. So it's still in the early planning stages, but that's what we're planning for.
Great, thank you, Karen. And yes, we'll definitely, um, the Keep Crema Beautiful will help sponsor that event with some cleanup items. And promotion of that as well. Thank you. So, thank you. So any other, um, comments from the committee members? Okay, um, hearing none. Um, I'll move on to item number eight, staff comments. Um, so I will, I would like to mention that, um, we did, from, um, the clerk of the board, we did receive notice that we have a new committee member that will be joining us. And who will be replacing Lynn Black for District Two as alternate member. His name is Brian DuHart. Um, and he's on, oh, I think he just joined the call right now. Hi, Brian, are you on?
Hello, yes, I'm, I'm on. Sorry, I'm a little late. I had trouble, um, getting into the system because my computers are set up for my schools and for some reason they didn't connect together. But anyway, I did make it.
Oh, yeah. Awesome, yeah, I was just introducing you. So thank you for joining us today, and, um, so yes, as I mentioned to you, and we do hold monthly meetings, the third Wednesday of each month at two o'clock. And, um, for now, we, we will be holding them remotely via Microsoft Teams. But would you like to just take a minute to introduce yourself to the committee and then, um, the committee members we have on the call, if you guys would also like to introduce yourself to Brian, that would be great.
Okay, sure, so I'll, I'll start. My name is Brian DuHart. Um, live in Kern County, live in Tehachapi, been out, been here since, uh, the late eighties. Um, I volunteered to help, uh, the, you know, help out in several different ways. Um, both in the city with the search and rescue. I've worked with Karen before out at, um, Cal City. And, um, and I happened to be at a jawbone event, and they asked me if I'd like to participate, and I, um, and I agreed. So I've been to Kern County for quite a few years. My kids are all born and raised here, a lot of them moved on. And, um. I guess that's about it. Oh, I, I work out at Edwards Air Force Base, uh, soon to retire, I think. We'll see how that goes. I also, uh, teach at, um, Saracosa Community College. So I guess, I guess that's about it. I didn't really plan to do an introduction, so I didn't have it formulated very well.
No, no, that's great.
Okay.
Great to hear from you.
Sure, thanks. Sorry I'm late.
No problem. Um, Linda, would you like to introduce yourself to Brian? What district do you represent?
Yeah, I'm up in District Four, so I'm out of the Shafter-Wasco area. Um, I work for a garbage collecting company and, uh, just part of the community. I've been in Shafter for thirteen years now, um, working in the industry for like close to eighteen, so, um. I'm just a local hauler, and if you need help connecting to any of the other haulers for cleanups, just let me know. Uh, we all kind of know each other. Um, and I do graffiti cleanups, community cleanups, bulk item events, things like that.
Nice, thank you.
Thank, thank you, Linda. Gary, would you like to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Gary Ananin with the Kern River Conservancy. We're located out here in Kernville, California. Uh, the majority of the work that we do is in the Sequoia National Forest. Uh, our major partners are Kern County Public Works and Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management. So anything you need up in the Kern River Valley, I'm your guy.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks, Gary. Chris?
I'm Chris McGee. I'm actually with District Five. And I'm uh, Assistant District Governor for Rotary International. And also on other boards throughout the county as well, so uh, just had organized many, or cleanups and tapped in, uh, different areas around there, and it's asked to be part of this.
Thanks, Chris. And, and you said you have worked with Karen Sanders closely before, Brian?
Oh, yes, I have. So I work with Karen a few times. And enjoyed it every time, I think. I don't know, I don't know, I don't remember, and that's not one of the good ones.
So, hey, Brian, we've known each other since about two thousand and twelve, I think.
Yeah.
And we worked on the Desert Incident Response Team together for California City Police Department and the OHV Recreation Program.
Yes, yep, that's the one.
Awesome. Well, thank you all for introducing yourselves to Brian, and welcome again to the committee. We've, um, been meeting, yes, of course, so we've been meeting actively for, um, about a year now, actually. Um, so we're excited. We have, we have representation throughout all of Kern County within each district. And so, um, we're just looking to, you know, do more cleanups in the near future, and hopefully, you know, we can maybe set up some time, um, also that each, all the committee members can get together to meet in person. Um, that would be something I would like to set up as well. Um, but thank you again, and, um. Any other comments from anybody on the call? Any questions? Okay, I'd like to move on to item number nine, um, public comments. Okay, so I'm hearing none. I'd like to move on to item number ten. Um, letting the committee know that our next regular meeting will be on Wednesday, August seventeenth at two PM, which will also be held, um, via Microsoft Teams, and one will be discussing and will be actually voting on the proposed list of items that we discussed them during our call today. Um, and so now I'd like to move on to item number eleven to adjourn today's meeting. At, um. Let's see, at two fifty-three PM. Do I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so I'll get a motion from Linda, and, um, can I get a second motion?
Oh, seconds.
Thank you, Gary. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all for joining us today, and I'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Thank you very much.